Both on the first and second floor, my yard off. My right, we left. In the event of an emergency, we have an emergency emergency. Also, at the third and second floor, at the O'Leivers. In the event of an emergency, we have to evacuate this room. We ask you to go to your right, my left, and exit out the front of the courtroom. Once at the bottom of the steps, just wrap around to the backside of the courtroom.
I see.
And I would prefer for the emergency ambulance. Can they all take these?
Thank you, Commissioner. It's time for the commissioners to answer your call electronically if you can. Madam Chair Collins, does it not work in for me? This is connected with. Yes, it was a present place. Pound dog. There to show. So we have twenty-three, Chris, and we have number four. Thank you for your attendance. You're looking over the agenda. I need to make a change again after I say this, please join me if you have any changes to make. Let's add an item seven B. Seven B, that is a memorial proclamation.
What?
Memorial proclamation. Okay, that's it for me.
Madam Chair, I've got one item under thirty minutes. Seventeen A, number eighteen. Request for three hundred sixty thousand five hundred dollars. Race eight pack at the health department. We'll have additional items to distribute in just a minute as soon as Carolyn gets back with copies. About that commentary in the state of Tennessee.
So you said item eighteen?
Yeah, let's make it after the animal shelter. Item seventeen, item seventeen A, number eighteen.
I get something because I don't have a page.
Seventeen A is a better intention. Starts out there.
Okay.
Why start them on the budget?
I see. Are there any other corrections or additions to the agenda? The floor is open for motion to approve as amended. Motion is made by Madam Collins. Seconded by Gary Kemp. Okay, on the screen, should I respond? And then always from Gary Kemp. Okay, any discussion? Let's vote on the agenda.
Will Campbell?
Yes.
Yes.
Aaron, did you go?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, now pass all who are present. We will go into our prayer and pray to the agents now. Our prayers to unite our commission will be. And beside him, ladies and gentlemen, we certainly hold.
Great to serve the Father, Lord, as we bow our heads today and thank you for this beautiful day, Lord, that you restored upon us. God, your blessings that you restored upon each one of us, Lord, that you give us good health. Lord, a chance to put our feet to the floor and take another breath. Thank you for that. Lord, most of all, we thank you for your precious son, Jesus, who came and died so that we could have life and have it more abundantly. Lord, we do pray today for our county leaders, Lord, we pray for each one that takes a part in this county. God, we pray, Lord, to pray for our responders, to every one of them. Lord, did you watch over them in our schools? Lord, in our kids, teachers, Lord, we pray, God, to keep your hands upon them. Lord, we can never praise you enough for your mercy and grace that you have upon each one of us, Lord. Lord, we thank you, give you praise and honor, we ask you by name, amen.
Agent, salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will our elected official's lips stand so we can show our appreciation for you? Okay, and now Mayor Patty Woodby is standing forward with a proclamation.
We have some very special guests in the audience with us tonight, and we're going to do a proclamation to honor the Appalachian Highlands Mission Ten for the Honor Flight. And then they're going to come up and speak just a little about what they plan to do when they arrive in DC on Saturday. So I'll begin by reading the proclamation for these guys. Whereas the Honor Flight of the Appalachian Highlands, since its formation in September twenty twenty-one, has dedicated itself to honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's veterans. In times of great danger, the men and women of the armed forces have stood resolute, putting their lives at risk when needed, when we needed them most. In making these sacrifices, they ask for nothing in return. Whereas the organization will complete its Mission Ten from October eleventh to October thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, serving over two hundred veterans through its remarkable efforts. By doing so, they have built healing, camaraderie, closure, and respect for those who have served. And whereas this mission will provide these esteemed veterans with the opportunity to visit memorials and monuments that pay tribute to their invaluable contributions to our nation's freedom and security. The honor, the Appalachian's honor mission includes stops at the D-Day and other war memorials, Virginia Military Institute, and a tour of Washington DC. And whereas the Honor Flight of the Appalachian Highlands has shown exceptional commitment through tireless efforts of its volunteers, donors, and supporters, ensuring that each veteran receives a day of recognition and gratitude and making these flights possible, free of charge, for these brave individuals. Whereas Carter County, along with surrounding counties, are fortunate to have such a dedicated Honor Flight organization serving our communities. Each and every participant in an Honor Flight mission describes a significant and life-changing experience, camaraderie, and heartfelt recognition that deeply honors their service and sacrifice. On behalf of every resident, thank you for your outstanding service. Now therefore, I, Patty Woodby, Mayor of Carter County, do hereby proclaim October eleventh through thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, as Honor Flight of the Appalachian Highland Mission Ten Days. In Carter County, Tennessee, on these days, let us acknowledge and celebrate the achievements of the Honor Flight of the Appalachian Highlands, honor the over two hundred veterans served since its inception, and extend our deepest appreciation to all who have contributed to this noble mission.
Gentlemen, if you would.
Service to this great country and this great community, we are so blessed for each and every one of you, and this is the least that we could do, and you're very committed for this. And I'll let you tell them a little bit of what you plan to do with the wreath.
Okay, this wreath will be laid Saturday morning about eight-thirty at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. We've been, this is, this will be our ninth trip under the Appalachian hood of Honor Flight. And each trip that we have made, we have laid a, they've allowed us to lay a wreath at the tomb. And so it's an honor to come in here tonight and talk to you guys and show you a little bit about what we do, and we're so thankful for that. I've got with me Sam Rogers over here on, well, first of all, all of us are Vietnam veterans. Sam over here shouldn't be here because they carried him out, and he was wounded five times, so he's, he's our hero. We've got, we've got Army guest, his brother Junior. My name's Al Hughes, and I'm, I'm the board member, and we are thankful for you folks. And if you want to do anything to help us, I'm a promoter. It takes money to take these veterans up there, and we do a lot of things in the community to raise money. So if you see a breakfast being done, or a spaghetti supper, or something like that, come out and help us out a little bit. We appreciate you.
Absolutely.
And by the way, one more thing. Army veteran, Vietnam.
Vietnam veteran.
Give him a, anybody else Vietnam veteran?
Brad Johnson.
Back there. Two more of them back there. Give them an application, and you guys make sure these guys go, will you? It's a trip of a lifetime, it really is. We start our, we'll start our day off Friday, we believe Friday morning, we'll start our day off Friday morning, and we'll drive up to Bedford, Virginia, and go through the D-Day Memorial. Go on into Washington, we'll have our evening meal with the VFW there, and they'll give us a little bit of history on the Civil War up there. Spend the night, go out in the, in the theater, out in the mall the next morning, and start visiting all these monuments that she was talking about, and it's quite a treat, it really is. Sunday, Sunday is another treat, we come back down the highway, we stop at BMI and have lunch with the cadets. And that's always a thrill for the veteran as well, it is for the cadets, so.
Explain the guardian.
And if anybody wants to be a guardian on one of these trips, we got any of you guys who are volunteer for a guardian?
Extra.
Extra? I just want you, I just want you to look twice.
Well, thank you so much, and let's give them another round of.
Thank you, veterans. Thank you, mayor. We are at item number eight on our agenda. We're going to talk this nineteen minutes. Are you ready? The floor is open for a motion.
It's not giving us the option.
It's not giving us the option.
We're not getting the option for a motion.
I did not mean to do that. But I doubt now I don't know.
Is it okay to leave you all there? Okay. Oh, okay, I see now. Okay, motion by Commissioner Hughes and seconded by Commissioner Fraser. And Ms. Collins does not wish to speak on.
No, I don't.
Okay. Does anybody else have any correction for addition? I did have one, yes, counsel there. It's the place where the landfill director interviews for mention. On page forty-eight, this is the very last thing on the minutes that says, where it starts with my name. It says that the landfill committee were going to be interviews for the landfill director's positions. I think you need to add, going to be a nothing campaign, or you can change it to interviewing, however you prefer. Anybody else see anything? Let's vote on the meeting stand from the September, I'm sorry, from the office.
Will Campbell?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so we did have feedbacks on last time, so that's why we have the three exceptions. The minutes have been approved. Now, if the press office will please read to us the people's sitting order in advance this month.
Kelly Collins, Drew Hertzaw, Elizabeth A. LeBrow, Michelle Kitchens, Elizabeth D. Moreland, Trudy K. Brummick, Nancy M. Burr, Edward D. Molan, Amy Host calm, Amy Klein, Amanda Little, Chelsea R. Blakely, Kristy C. Boland, Kimberly G. Garnier.
And you have a motion for winning deal, a second place and possible to approve of those. For any discussion? Let's vote on utteries and bonds.
Will Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes. We now elect chairperson and vice chairperson for the coming year. Floor is open for nominations.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Ginger Holton for chair.
We have one nomination, are there others?
I have a motion, Madam Collins.
Hey, we have a motion for Kelly Collins.
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, though. I appreciate the support.
What is it taking? You probably buy another shirt.
All right, the floor is still open.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, nomination ceases.
One second.
Okay, do the words elect, uh, proclamation, they can be added, or not, are they?
If you all want to take two, oops.
So do you want to add those words, Mrs. Smith?
Yes, ma'am.
And two second minutes. Mr. Prophet, is that okay with you? All right, is there discussion? Let's vote. Yes, enter your probability, second minute. Without further discussion requested, let's vote.
Will Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Commissioners, I thank you. Very nice for the confidence you have placed in me yet. The election of vice chairperson will now have been placed, the floor is open for nominations.
I would like to nominate Kelly Collins as the House Chair, if she will speak.
Okay.
With the honor, thank you.
Okay, so we have a nomination accepted by Kelly Collins. Okay, we have a second from Angie Dodon. Not that we necessarily need that, the floor is open for a motion. If there are no other nominations, but it's still open for nominations right now.
Make a motion that we cease nominations that elect by a proclamation.
Is there a second to that motion? Maybe when is that you? So motion made by Fraser, seconded by me. Discussion. Uh, you're voting on Kelly Collins for vice chairperson?
Yes.
Motion passes, congratulations, Ms. Collins. Uh, item Landen, it's a consideration and possible debate for election of Commissioner's sustaining committees. We will start with District One. If they will tell us what committees each time in the questioning, we'll see if we have to debate for them.
I'd like to stay on the education, highway, and landfill.
I select to stay on building grounds, health and welfare, law enforcement, rules and bylaws.
Stay on budget nominating.
Yeah, I'll have to screen. So, no debate there, let's go to District Two.
District Two, we decide the all-inclusive side committees. So on the bottom, education, land, and highway.
We'll be staying the same, it'll be myself on the budget nominating. Uh, Commissioner Holton on building grounds, health and welfare, law enforcement, rules, bylaws. And Commissioner Burris on education, highway, and landfill.
Thank you. All right, District Four?
District Four will be staying the same. I'll be on budget nominating, Jerry Prophet will be on law enforcement, and Gary Kemp will be on education, landfill, and highway.
All right, District Five?
I'll be moving to education, landfill, and highway. Commissioner Thomas will be on building grounds, health and welfare, law enforcement, rules, and bylaws.
District Six.
Todd Smith will be on budget nominating. I will be on education, highway, landfill. Jason Thompson will be on building and grounds, health, and welfare, law enforcement.
Commissioner Page, District Seven.
Commissioner Raznick will be staying where he is on education, landfill. Ms. Hughes will be moving to budget nominating, and I'll be on the building and grounds at all.
I see Commissioner Fraser, District Eight.
Mr. Stout will be on budget, Tom, uh, Mr. Prophet will be going on education, and Collins will be going on building and grounds.
Thank you, and just a side note that Thomas Prophet is on his way to the same. He now has a dog, several minute drive until he's here. So now, Attorney Henry, we need a motion to approve all that stated.
I like the motion.
Okay. All right, so we see Ms. Julie Quinn's name on the screen, if we could go by. Okay, Julie Quinn made a motion to accept all as stated in the second council, Eric Fraser. Is there any discussion? All right, please vote on the standing committees.
Will Campbell?
Yes.
Will Collins?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We're at item twelve, which is the election of the financial management committee members. There are four slots available, they change annually. Currently, the FMC meets on Thursday evenings around five. It's the committee openings can be commissioners for people outside the commission. So the floor is open for your nominations. Mr. Deel?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Brad Johnson.
Okay, we have a nomination for Brad Johnson.
I nominate Chad Lewis.
Nomination for Chad Lewis.
Nominate Kelly Collins.
You have nomination for Kelly Collins.
I would like to nominate Danny Deal.
You have a motion for nomination for Danny Deal.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Ecker.
I'd like to nominate Ginger Holton.
I put a new quote, sir, thank you. Nick Alder nominated Dr. Ecker.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Jerry Stout.
According to my count, we have six nominations, is there any more? So we will commence voting. When you vote, you may vote for up to four of those six names on the big end in just a second. You do not have to vote for four, but you can vote for up to four. Each one will name thirteen on her votes to be selected for that committee. Are there any questions? Have a good voice though. If you all will call the row when you're ready.
Chad Lewis, Jerry Stout.
That's the six that I have. Okay, so as, as we begin, your, your six choices are Johnson, Chad Lewis, Kelly Collins, Deal, Ecker, Stout. Okay, so, as we begin, your six choices are Johnson, Chad Lewis, Kelly Collins, Deel, Eka, Stout.
Kelly Campbell.
Kelly Collins. Eka. Jerry Stout, Johnson.
Nick Alder.
Eka, Johnson, Deel, Jerry Stout.
All right, Eka.
Eka, Deel, Johnson, Stout.
The last name, is that the only one you have? Danny Deel.
Who was the last?
Could you repeat?
Brad Johnson, Kelly Collins, Danny Deel.
Danny Nguyen.
Brad Johnson, Danny Deel, Dr. Eka, Jerry Stout. Stout, Eka, Deel, Johnson, Eka.
Julie Nguyen.
Johnson, Deel, Eka and Stout.
And who?
Stout.
Brad Johnson.
Johnson, Eka, Deel, Stout.
Steve Burrow.
Eka, Stout, Deel, Johnson.
Angie Dodum.
Eka, Stout, Johnson and Deel.
Danny Deel.
Johnson, Deel, Eka, Stout.
Kelly Campbell.
Brad Johnson, Dr. Eka, Kelly Collins and Danny Deel.
Jerry Prophet.
Stout, Johnson, Deel, Eka.
Mrs. Childress.
Johnson, Collins, Deel and Eka.
Nick Alder.
Johnson, Deel, Eka, Stout.
Charlie Thomas.
Johnson, Deel, Eka, Stout.
Donnie Cable.
Collins, Stout.
Jason Clausen.
Eka, Johnson, Deel, Stout.
Just the Deel and Stout.
Yes.
Todd Smith.
Johnson, Collins, Eka, Stout.
Jason Raznick.
Stout, Eka, Johnson, Collins.
Leslie Hughes.
Stout and Collins.
Just the two, please. Fraser.
Collins and Lewis.
Jerry Stout.
Johnson, Collins, Eka, Deel.
Kelly Collins.
Collins and Stout.
Thomas Prophet.
Let's open the seat. Please read the nominees who have thirteen or more votes.
Yes, yes. Dr. Eka, nineteen. Brad Johnson, nineteen. Danny Deel, sixteen. Jerry Stout, eighteen.
Okay, so those four will make up your Financial Management Committee for the coming year. We are on item number thirteen, election of your board members. We have two vacancies. The floor is open for any nominations for those two positions.
Nominate Todd Smith.
Okay, we have a nomination for Todd Smith. Sorry, I can't hear you. Okay, we have a nomination for Avery Nguyen. We have a nomination for Thomas Prophet. Are you already on your Thomas? All right, so we have Smith and Nguyen. Any others? We have two nominations and two vacancies. Information, thank you, no update.
I think a nomination that we elect by acclamation and cease nominations.
Okay, we have a motion. And second, I agree to elect by acclamation. Any questions? Okay, let's please vote.
Kelly Campbell.
Yes.
Kelly Collins.
Yes.
We got all twenty-four office round, and that is the news. Thank you, man, for being willing to serve. Okay, it's time for public comments. Anyone here from the public wants to speak, you have five minutes. Please come forward and have a look at your agenda.
Things seem to be getting taller every meeting. I'm Jim Winchester, two seventy-three, Steve Bryanstaff, Road, District Four. Backed you to talk about two subjects so far, which is Elizabeth Electric Program.
Can you speak just a little bit? I'll have a question.
I'm talking about the Elizabeth Electric Program conversion of all existing sodium and metal halide fixtures to LED. And in my previous visits, I told you that I think that fixture they have selected is objectionable to everyone who sees it now. They're not everywhere because they're doing it as a incremental process as the old burnout. So you may not have noticed one yet, but when the leaves drop, oh, excuse me, thank you. When the leaves drop, I think it's those people in those white brands. So I went to the city council on Thursday night. And an interesting situation here is where they listen like things, but nobody really wants to talk about why this fixture was selected. And that is the great question that I have yet to have somebody answer is why they select this fixture. What is distinguishing about this fixture is to the best of my knowledge, in the entire tri-city regions, it is the only LED fixture that has a drop lens. It's not in the city. It's not anywhere else. Why that was selected for a rural residential area is baffling. And I'll clarify that in just a minute. My wife has got some handouts, and if you don't mind, while she passes them out, I'm gonna pause.
Can both pass go?
What we usually do, Mr. Winchester, is we place them near the podium and let commissioners pick them out during the break. That has been our policy for years.
All right, well, then this exhibit, if they could look at that, at least that would be really important. The other thing is less important, but the exhibit's really important.
Please come in.
If you make a exception, just it's a one page.
I'm not gonna change the rules. I wanna be sure I treat everybody the same. So you can't give them out, but place them here on the podium or here in the microphone. And commissioners pick them out during the break. Thank you. I appreciate your understanding on that.
The rules are the rules, Commissioner. Okay. Now, this handout is a one page. And this is a picture of me standing in front of my garage, and those of you in the back really can't see it. But on my white garage door is the Christmas timeline of me that you could imagine. And I asked the commissioner, well, how far away do you think that line is from me? There's that kind of sharp outline. And she guessed fifty feet. No, it's not fifty feet. It's not fifty yards. It's not a hundred yards. It's two hundred and fifty yards. When you look at the picture, you're gonna be shocked. I mean, it's just the thought of that being next to anybody's house is really shocking. Now, the other element of this, which is important, in which I sent a letter to the city council about this, because basically, every time they install this fixture, they are creating a private nuisance. Now, one of the private nuisances is a legal violation of the adjoining property owner's rights. And so I wanna read to you what a nuisance is because you really need to know, because I think understanding that is key to this issue. So a nuisance is a tort characterized by interference with the use or enjoyment of the property of another. A nuisance is anything that annoys or disturbs the previous of one's property or that renders the ordinary physical occupation uncomfortable. It extends to everything that gives offense to the senses, and that is the Court of Appeals, Ketswood versus Phillip Boomer. That is the law. It's been the law for ever. But a lot of people aren't aware that is the law. Every time one of these goes up, the city is creating a potential lawsuit among the neighbors. And I think that's a despicable situation that they would go forward with this. But yeah, so far they will. So, the other handout is an educational thing, which I hope all of you will take. It's not complicated. It's not very difficult. But it contains what are known as the five principles for responsible outdoor lighting. The five principles have been adopted and created.
Excuse me, Mr. Winchester. I have to stop you. I gave you twenty extra seconds because of the time it took us to discuss the handouts.
Okay.
Thank you for your understanding.
Thank you, absolutely. Thank you.
I'm June Moon Person. It's my life that he's confirming about. I'm living immediately next door. I'm not very good at this. I'm not a woman. Certainly not a public speaker. So, the one thing that I have is a copy of this up here. And this is the distance from our light, which is right here, to his, the edge of his property, which is about seven hundred and thirty feet. The line to our property is over five, around five hundred, within a hundred feet. So, we've had this light on the property since nineteen ninety-seven. It's provided by the electric company. We left the light recently and did go out, did an LED lighting. It is a little broader. We have tried, we've had four light changes. They've changed the light. They've changed the positioning of the light, and then they've changed it back. The current light we have is like the first LED they put up, but now it has a shield on it. So, we are certainly trying to work with him on what he does not appreciate about our light. Our position is that we have farm equipment, we have property, we have animals, we have all kinds of stuff we need to protect. This lighting is really important for the security of our property and equipment, and the safety of the people and the animals that we have. One of the other things is, I know that they moved here from Colorado. They lived in a very exclusive community. They had an HOA that had all kinds of restrictions. So that's what they're used to. So, they're not used to living in the country. They're not used to neighbors doing things. They're not used to getting a rap on their neighbors. They're not very accepting of our cultures and our requirements for the things that we need. And, you know, a lot of people moved here from other places, have done a great job. You know, we have a lot of friends. We've tried very hard to get along with them. My husband's done a number of things just to help him and to his family. He actually has called my husband to help. His tree's that evolved, you know, he came and helped him set him back up. Our biggest thing is people moving into our community and trying to force their lifestyle and their culture was lacking where they came from. Just like the process, the Ten Commandments, you know, what's next? We've done that lot since nineteen ninety-seven. We've never had any complaints. We've never had any problems with it. We appreciate our properties. We love all of our neighbors. We have a great community, well-established. A lot of people have been there as many as eighty years in their families' lives. I have a petition. I just started it yesterday, but I think I've only missed one person in our community that I couldn't catch at home. Everybody around us has signed this. The number one thing is that he does not support our community. And I don't believe he speaks for me also. It's dark sky. Really restricts your lighting and cause a lot of problems. As far as saying you can't even have your light on after a certain time at night. So, that just doesn't work for a community. It doesn't work for safety. You know, we're working against vandalism and theft and personal harm. So, we just want everybody to consider that. Understand that you guys really don't have charge of that type of information, but we would like your support to help us. I believe most all of Corner County will agree with us that this is not for our community. It's not for our neighborhoods. It's not for our family, and certainly not for our lifestyles. So, if anybody has any questions, you can feel free to contact me. Just because he's the loudest or even the most persistent doesn't mean that he should be able to force the rest of us to block him. And that's the difference. How is we, the past, we have? I have this. I have the petition. And like I said, we only started yesterday, so it really is just our community of our community. And do you want me to go back here? Do you want me to...
If you're willing to leave anything with us for keeps, leave it. Otherwise, you'll need to stay until after the break to get your options back.
Okay, I can do that, because I'd actually like to provide it to the city also. We're going to continue to get more signatures on this. This affects all of the county, it doesn't just affect us. We understand that if he gets our light, he's going almost everybody in our community. Literally almost everyone has a light.
I need to stop.
Okay, please, I'll just...
Please repeat your name, please, repeat your name in the nurse's office.
June McPherson, M-C-P-H-E-R-S-O-N. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, and I remember from the public speaking tonight.
Hello, everyone, I'm Toni Winchester, and I live at 273 C. Grines Staff. Yes, we are out-of-towners. We chose to move to a rural community because we enjoy the outdoors, we enjoy the night sky. And now we didn't like necessarily the orange lights that were everywhere, but you know what? It is what it is. But now they're starting to change those orange lights to these bright lights that are coming on to my property that impact my ability to enjoy the outdoors and the night sky because I've got these lights that are on my property. And the night sky, it's not totally out of this world. All it does is project the light downward. The current lights that you see are horizontal. So if you are below that light, it is going to blind you. There was a property not just, I think, two blocks from us. It was subdivided into seven blocks. Well, when those seven people decide to build, I'm going to have seven more of those new lights a block away from my house. That's going to light the sky and impact our enjoyment of the outside. I understand people's needs for security, for their home, for their safety, I get that. We have motion sensor lights at our house, we have all dark sky lights. So if you're from the street looking in, it's not going to blind you, it just, blind you, it just lights up the area below the light. So that's all we're seeking, we're not here to change the culture. We want to beautify Corner County. These lights are just not offensive. So if we continue the way we are, then I have absolutely no rights. I'm going to have seven of these new bright lights to my north. I've got one to my east and one to my west. And they're probably going to go on Moon Springs, so my house is going to be surrounded by these lights, which is going to impact our enjoyment. Does anybody have any questions? This is the packet my husband was talking about, talking about the night sky concept. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winchester. Does anyone else wish to speak tonight?
I guess that's how you get ten minutes, right? I'm Bill McPherson, I'm Tony's husband, didn't attend on speaking, but I did want to put out a couple of things that was left out. The lights been changed three different times, been adjusted several times. None of them have been satisfied. At the city council meeting, he made the comment, you all just need to come take that light down. So for somebody to come in and move in your community, the lights were there when they moved in. They moved there in '21, they were there since 1997. On the petition that she has, the people who have signed that live closer than he does, and Ms. Winchester. Closer than they do. Nobody has any problem with it, their security lights. You know, when there's a full moon outside in the next few days, you go up there and look, you can see your shadow on the wall all different directions. You know, you can't, you can't control all that stuff. Some of the pictures they have taken in there were from the very first light they put up. And it was very bright. Well, the electric company come out there and put a shield on. He was talking about how those lights were the only ones that had the fixture that came down below. And so it set up over, they put a shield down at their request. They said, why don't you get one of these shields? They got one, still not happy about it. They're not going to be happy until it's taken down. And we don't need people coming to our community, even if you live in our community, whether you moved here from somewhere else. If I wanted to put a light up on my property, I'd be able to. With bears, coyotes, and everything else running around out there, you don't need to walk out in the dark and run off. And there's two or three other lights around in our neighborhood out there, and the people that live next door to those lights, right beside them, no bad as a problem. I think, I don't think there's anything other than total darkness that's going to make them happy. And then when it full moon, they'll just have to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Marjorie Keiger, and I dress as 240 Steel Bridge Road, Lisbon. I'm the backyard neighbor stability, and my property borders their property in the back. We're accustomed to that light, we have no issues with that light. I've been here since 2010. I have no issues with that light. The light at the curve there on Steel Bridge, my neighbor's light at their property line, because they're all there, and we need them. We've had issues with bears. I've walked out at night to find Mama Bear growling with her three cubs, okay? We have issues with the coyotes. We watch over our dogs and everything else, and all the neighbor's cats and everything else that we got out there, okay? It's not a comfortable place to be without light at night, even when we take in the LED strobes and things like that that we might carry as our flashlights. I understand Dark Sky Initiative. My husband is an avid astronomer, okay? We have been gone through five renovations or design changes on building a little observatory on the back of our property. Okay, so I understand how gorgeous it is. I can't tell you how many telescopes I got downstairs, okay? And camera equipment and everything else. So we appreciate what they're saying, but we do not, as the neighbors that have been here since 2010 in my case, okay? Yes, I came from outside of this area. I appreciate this area, I love my neighbors, I love my property. I love everything about this county, okay? And this state, certain people will tell you. It's a great place to be, and I do not have any issues with this light the way it exists now or the way it was before. And I welcome the extra light, I truly do. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have about 10 seconds? I think there's a misunderstanding, believe that I...
I'm sorry, sir, but I can't allow that. Thank you. Is there anybody else here speaking on a different topic tonight? Okay. Well, I want to thank all of you for coming, and I want to thank you for the calm respect between each other, and I love you both, one another's thoughts. Thank you for that. And we will be moving on in our meeting to item number 15, which is a financial report or report.
Getting the materials from budget and financial management are in your package. Also, your new financial reports are in there, which should be much improved from what you've been getting in the past. If you have any comments, questions, concerns, feel free to contact me either by phone or by email. I'll be happy to discuss them.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. We will have a communications project up today led by Mark Riddings. Okay, if you all would like a break before that, that's okay with me. So take a 10-minute break, please.
Oh, really?
She did not survive these. Well, that's killing it. The man at the back row.
I don't know what.
He got one of them.
She was in the hair. She saw the news, she's like, they're eating the birds.
My cable.
Okay. Okay. Well, do you want to get it now or do you want to? Okay, I would. Yeah, okay.
Could you come back to your lights please?
Thank you, gracious. We will resume our meeting with the communications report director.
Thank you for having me here. For the two days report where the approval, actually not the approval, the award, the other grant. That's probably from that little locker room. I'm sure we're going to get it, but it's one of those things we gotta wait and. Until the video is on that grant, we can't do anything until we can get that grant. I have been in contact with Rich Rose, I think I've told everybody that last month. I continue to stay in contact with him. So far my contacts have been positive. He did ask for some interoperability channels to make sure that he can talk to the sheriff and he can talk to the. We got a frequency use agreement put in place for both of those now. So Rich Rose does have those, hoping the tech will kind of move things along. I don't know if it will or not. But trying to maintain a good relationship with him. I brought with me Sean Erickson, he's the Motorola salesman for Tennessee.
Yes, sir.
Yes. I think there's some questions that you might have, so I'll leave it up to you.
This has been your world since two years now.
Yes, sir.
Why has it taken so long?
The biggest holdup is have been, and I don't fault them for it, it's just a fact. It's the forestry service.
Well, I know the forestry service is over, but why was purchasing radios such a hassle?
Okay. I was working with Motorola on the purchase of radios. Early on, we talked about it. Motorola, due to policies, I guess, can't extend warranty on radios or prolong the warranty. It has to be by the manufacturer date that they've got the radio. So if we had purchased radios two years ago, no limit, an 18 month to 24 month window, we've borrowed up two years, three year warranty. We have them sitting on the shelf and we'd basically almost be out of warranty by the time we got them all sold. Portable radios have basically a three year battery life. Those batteries would also need to be replaced. So we'd be looking for replacing the batteries, basically when we started the system. That's why we didn't order those.
Mark, if I could add something, that's a big issue we find on a lot of projects. If the batteries come in, if you're not properly sorting them, you're not cycling them through the charges, you have to replace them by the time it's go live. So we've learned as best practice for us not to do that, maybe release a couple for programming and fleet mapping and testing. But we don't do the whole fleet anymore. We've noticed it's been a huge hassle, again, for the end users having to gather up the batteries, box them up, return them. It just doesn't turn into something positive for the end user. So that is part of it, in protecting the warranty, protecting the usability of the product.
What is it that has prevented the proposal from your firm to this county over a two year period when our request has been moved? Now, there's a lot of comments. One is the tire at White Rock, having it approved by US Forestry. That's not in the specification. That's not your concern. That's up to this county's problem. Isn't that not right?
So yes and no. Yes, that is something from getting obtained to get onto the tower. Yes, that's something that Carter County works with, but that's also something for us. Because if we don't have the approval, we use our resources to try to get that approval as well. So we can start doing the structural work, laying down pads for the shelters, moving up the equipment. So it is a two party truth there. But again, we do also, and what we're doing right now, from a forestry perspective, using our lobbyists in Washington, working slowly, chipping away at getting those approvals, or getting that into front of the right folks, so you guys don't have to wait anymore. That's been a lot since I've come on board. I came on board January last year, same with our local account manager, as well as Chris Massingale, our manufacturer director. So what we've been doing is working in the back and marking the team, trying to get that forestry approval over the pump. Once that approval is done, then we can go in, put up a new tower, put up a shelter, heat the road down. I know that's a part from Carter County aspect of it, but it is very much intertwined. So that is something we do try to help our local partners with, especially in situations like this. If we've got the resources to do it, we definitely want to do that.
But the proposal is for the tire.
Okay.
Whether, while we're waiting on his approval, it has to be some discussion, whether we'll allow a red light because of the elevation, the height above tree line. But of a company that is as old and is engineering minded wise and everything, that tower is so long, the equipment don't change. So, correct. Okay, then, why don't you get off your duff and give a proposal to this county? Because we're having to evaluate the expenditures of our ARP money, has been since the day that you all came in, you're two and a half years ago.
Sir.
What's the holdup?
So we've done a revised proposal. So the original proposal that was given back as a result of the ARP in 2022, that proposal, we refreshed to the latest repeaters, the latest consoles. So that had equipment that we don't want to give to you guys right away, because we don't want that lifecycle to run out. So we've adjusted that, made sure that's the latest and greatest for you all. What I've also done, and this is part of the process, and again, some of the delay on our side, and we'll take it. Part of that has been going through our finance, our product, as well as up in the upper echelons of our VPs and regional VPs to get approval. And even though we're refusing, for the last proposal we gave you, there was going to be a price increase. I know Mark has talked with us about getting a grant for some of the radios. We've done with the balances, even though we're moving to the latest and greatest equipment, we've now taken that increase off the table for you guys. So there's the tacking portion that they've agreed to and still agree to. There's the Motorola portion, so your contract that was signed back in 2022 was 4.5 million and change. We have not decided to exceed that, we've taken that off the table. So I know that was something from the last proposal that was given, back in August timeframe, July, August timeframe, that we worked through that had a, what's called a change order or an increase, that's been taken off. We understand that's a frustration point, again, also back to my first point about working with forestry. So that's been part of the problem. I know it's not the fastest, and I'll be the first one to tell you, it's not the fastest, but what we've been trying to do is minimize that impact. We took what Mark said to heart, we understand what we're trying to do to work with you all. I understand it's been very frustrating, that's where we're at at this point. So right now, once the forestry site's approved, there's a change order that would come through from our project management team, but there's no increase to Carter County, there's no increase to tacking as well.
Well, Bill, I'll give you another thing that you mentioned too, and I can stand to be corrected. There's never been a contract with your firm, it has never been through this floor. Well, okay, we have asked for over a year, through Mark, for up to date, for a contract price.
So, again, the contract price, we've changed the equipment list. At this point, the original contract that was signed in '22, that is just a change of an equipment list that goes from our G series repeaters, our NCC consoles, to our access consoles. And then we did change out Apex 4000, we moved them to N30s. But again, that's at no additional cost to you all. So there's no revised proposal to provide, because it's just an equipment list. And when we do that change order, right, once the forestry site's done, that revised equipment list would be included in that change order, so you all would be able to see that. So I'm not just up here saying we're going to do all these things, it would be memorialized in that change order.
Well, in reference to two and a half years ago, the battle that took place on this floor. I mean, it even had to go in, we had to have a special call meeting. Ours is the best, we're the greatest, this is what we can do for you, and then it went to deaf ears, it fell apart, and we still sit right now, not knowing anymore than you did two and a half years ago. Well, how credible is your firm?
So we are very credible, I understand the frustrations.
You can be frustrated, it's a matter that you can be eliminated.
What's that?
You can be eliminated, the company can be eliminated and say, okay, if this floor says we are not going to deal with you because I depend on you, then where are you going to be?
Then you're right here working with you guys. Our goal is to not abandon anybody, to move on from anybody. Again, where we're at right now, we're working to get that forestry site approval. White Rock site that's up there today, that hinges on the project. Any provider that comes up there, we've had multiple discussions about that. I'm learning Carter County, I live in Wilson County, I'm learning the east. But putting that all together, that's a huge piece of, that hinges on the project itself. We don't want to go in and start installing equipment on other sites, and if for some reason that White Rock site falls apart, then it's even more frustrating for you guys, because then we can't complete it. So we're ready to go, we've got the right people in there. And we were here July last year, we sat with the interim forestry contact. We had walked through and basically had said, look, guys, what can we do to get you what you need to move it along that forestry process? We as Motorola are ready to go. One of the things too, you're going to start seeing us in these meetings, understand, look, that's something we don't want you all to think that we've left you high and dry, that's what we're going to start to do. So we are ready in our steps, the minute forestry says go, our teams are ready to go, get the equipment ordered, get that stuff shipped, it'll get staged in Manchester, in Carter County, at our warehouse, and then we'll be brought out here to the sites. So that's the biggest thing right there. I know we've worked with our partners at the road department, understanding both the requirements from forestry, as well as the requirements from Motorola, so we can get the equipment up the top of, to the White Rock site.
When they say the White Rock is ready, how long at that point before it might start happening?
So typically, once they give us the green light, we would be scheduling our civil firms to go up, obviously make sure, that would be in conjunction with the road department, to make sure the road is ready, to be getting some of the cranes and some of the heavy equipment up there. Typically, that site, because it's a green site is what they call it, you know, that can be anywhere from 12 to 18 months. What we do, and understanding the timelines all under with the ARPA funding and the other financial requirements, we would make sure that we want to pull, try to pull in those schedules as much as possible. So there has been pre-work done to get those folks lined up. It's simply once, to your point, once they hit go, then we can start getting the road done, scheduling to get the concrete pad poured, the shelters laid, and then the steel put up, 195 foot tower.
Best case, when they say go, it's at least 12 months.
At least 12.
Or 18 months.
Roughly, we say a good one, and I try to be conservative with it, typically a deployment is about 18 to 24 months. I've seen it done in 16 months, I've seen it done in 12 months. It really depends on the number of sites, access to sites, are they existing, do you have to build them, that kind of thing. But, again, in my time being here, we've talked so much about Carter County, firmly, that this is something, I know our project teams, it's important for us, it's important for the build out of the statewide system, tacking, to make sure that's done. So I can tell you, that is a priority, the minute we get green, our teams want to get that stuff set up, you guys.
We've been trying to do as much homework as we can, and trying to do as much as we can to get it going, so we can get a lot of that out of the way, so hopefully we can lessen that time and keep that down under that 12 months.
And I know the FAA portion of it, being that it's a 195 foot tower, so that did pass FAA approval, it doesn't need to be lighted, because it's under that 200 foot threshold as well. So again, we've laid out, and there's documentation that we've provided to Mark, that can be shared, and so that's from, you know, the different approvals, we've gone through travel, we've gone through FAA. So now with forestry where it sits today, and this is what I'm taking back to my teams, and again, our different resources, saying, hey, it hasn't even been put out for public comment. That public comment is roughly, what, 90 days, to be honest here?
I don't actually know.
Okay. I've heard varying times.
I've heard 30 days after 20 days.
I'll say 90 days on the high end, I don't want to underestimate that, but again, once that goes to public comment, there's no comment, then it goes to final approval from the forestry aspect. So that's where we are getting our resources, as you can see, lined up to say, okay, this is where the step is, how do we get it done?
Christian Fraser, you have the floor.
Oh, Miss Collins. No, I didn't, my phone is going crazy.
Two questions, one on the 18 month timeframe, I understand that's the entire timeframe for White Rock. Will the other installation be taken concurrently, or will it be a consecutive sort of?
It would be at the same time. So what we would try to do is the minute that White Rock, again, everything hinges on that, once that's good to go, we would start doing all the work and getting that scheduled. So it wouldn't be one at a time, that's a good question.
And number two, do you know the number of personnel changes that have been in the forestry service?
By short time, it has been a lot.
There's been two since last July.
Yes.
So that probably hindered you more than just about anything else. Forestry Service typically does not want anything to go in here, it's like their personal playground or whatever. But, and they want to shut things down that are already existing here, so yeah, everything that goes on with the forestry service, if something should only take a month, it will take at least a year. It's insane. So appreciate you guys sharing the information and that sort of thing.
Correct. Whether, while we're waiting on his approval, it has to be some discussion of whether to allow a red light because of the elevation, the height above tree line. But of a company that is as old and is engineering minded wise and everything, that tower is so long, the equipment don't change. So, correct. Okay, then, why don't you get off your duff and give a proposal to this county? Because we're having to evaluate the expenditures of our ARP money has been since the day that you all came in here two and a half years ago. What's the holdup?
So, we've done a revised proposal. So, the original proposal that was given back as a result of the ARPA in 2022, that proposal, we refreshed to the latest repeaters, the latest consoles. So, that had equipment that we don't want to give to you guys right away because we don't want that lifecycle to run. So, we've adjusted that. We've made sure that's the latest and greatest for you all. What I've also done, and this is part of the process, and again, some of the delay on our side, and we'll take it. Part of that has been going through our finance, our product, as well as up in the upper echelons of our VPs and regional VPs to get approval. And even though we're, the last proposal we gave you, there was going to be a price increase. I know Mark has talked with us about getting a grant for some of the radios. We've done with the balances, even though we're moving to the latest and greatest. We've now taken that increase off the table for you guys. So, there's the tacking portion that they've agreed to and still agree to. And then there's the Motorola portion. So, your contract that was signed back in 2022 was 4.5 million and change. We have not decided to exceed that. We've taken that off the table. So, I know that was something from the last proposal that was given back in August timeframe, July, August timeframe, that we worked through that had a what's called a change order or an increase. That's been taken off. We understand that's a frustration point. Again, also back to my first point about working with forestry. So, that's been part of the problem. I know it's not the fastest, and I'll be the first one to tell you, it's not the fastest. But what we've been trying to do is minimize that impact. We took what Mark said to heart. We understand what we're trying to do to work with you all. I understand it's been very frustrating. That's where we're at at this point. So, right now, once the forestry sites approved, there's a change order that would come through from our project management team. But there's no increase to Carter County. There's no increase to tacking as well.
Well, the other option, the thing that you mentioned too, and I can stand to be corrected, there's never been a contract with your firm. It has never been through this floor. Well, okay, we have asked for over a year through Mark for up to date for a contract price.
So, again, the contract price, we've changed the equipment list. At this point, the original contract that was signed in '22, that is just a change of an equipment list that goes from our G-series repeaters to our NCC consoles to our access consoles. And then we did change out Apex 4000s. We moved them into 1030s. But again, that's at no additional cost to you all. So, there's no revised proposal to provide because it's just an equipment list. And when we do that change order, right, once the forestry site's done, that revised equipment list would be included in that change order. So, you all would be able to see that. So, I'm not just up here saying we're going to do all these things. It would be memorialized in that change order.
Well, in reference to two and a half years ago, the battle that took place on this floor, I mean, it even had to go in, we had to have a special call meeting. Ours is the best. We're the greatest. This is what we can do for you. And then it went to deaf ears. It fell apart, and we still sit right now, not knowing anymore than you did two and a half years ago. Well, how credible is your firm?
So, we are very credible. I understand the frustrations.
Any frustration, it's a matter that you can be eliminated.
What's that?
You can be eliminated. The company can be eliminated and say, okay, if this floor says we are not going to deal with you because I depend on you, then where are you going to be?
We're right here working with you guys. Our goal is to not abandon anybody, to move on from anybody. Again, where we're at right now, we're working to get that forestry site approval. White Rock site that's up there today, that hinges on the project. Any provider that comes up there, we've had multiple discussions about that. I'm learning Carter County. I live in Wilson County. I'm learning the east. But putting that all together, that's a huge piece of, that hinges on the project itself. We don't want to go in and start installing equipment on other sites. And if for some reason that White Rock site falls apart, then it's even more frustrating for you guys because then we can't compete. So, we're ready to go. We've got the right people in there. And we were here July last year when we sat with the interim forestry contact. We had walked through and basically had said, look, guys, what can we do to get you what you need to move it along that forestry process? We as Motorola are ready to go. One of the things too, you're going to start seeing us in these meetings. Understand, look, that's something we don't want you all to think that we've left you high and dry. That's what we're going to start to do. So, we are ready in our steps. The minute forestry says go, our teams are ready to go, get the equipment ordered, get that stuff shipped. It'll get staged in Manchester, in Carter County, at our warehouse, and then we'll be brought out here to the sites. So, that's the biggest thing right there. I know we've worked with our partners at the road department, understanding both the requirements from forestry as well as the requirements from Motorola, so we can get the equipment up the top of, to the White Rock site.
When they say the White Rock is ready, how long at that point before it starts happening?
So, typically, once they give us the green light, we would be scheduling our civil firms to go up, obviously make sure, that would be in conjunction with the road department to make sure the road is ready, to be getting some of the cranes and some of the heavy equipment up there. Typically, that site, because it's a green site is what they call it, you know, that can be anywhere from 12 to 18 months. What we do, and understanding the timelines all are under with the ARPA funding and the other financial requirements, we would make sure that we want to pull, try to pull in those schedules as much as possible. So, there has been pre-work done to get those folks lined up. It's simply once, to your point, once they hit go, then we can start getting the road done, scheduling to get the concrete pad poured, the shelters laid, and then the steel put up, 195 foot tower.
Best case, when they say go, it's at least 12 months.
At least 12.
Or 18 months.
Roughly, we say a good one, and I try to be conservative with it, typically a deployment is about 18 to 24 months. I've seen it done in 16 months. I've seen it done in 12 months. It really depends on the number of sites, access to sites, are they existing? Do you have to build them? That kind of thing. But, again, in my time being here, we've talked so much about Carter County. This is something, I know our project teams, it's important for us, it's important for the build out of the statewide system, tacking, to make sure that's done. So, I can tell you that is a priority. The minute we get green, our teams want to get that stuff set up, and we can get you guys.
We've been trying to do as much homework as we can and trying to do as much as we can to get it going. So, we can get a lot of that out of the way. So, hopefully, we can lessen that time and keep that down under that 12 months.
And I know the FAA portion of it, being that it's a 195 foot tower, so that did pass FAA approval, doesn't need to be lighted because it's under that 200 foot threshold as well. So, again, we've laid out, and there's documentation that we've provided to Mark, that can be shared. And so, that's from, you know, the different approvals. We've gone through travel, we've gone through FAA. So, now with forestry where it sits today, and this is what I'm taking back to my teams, and again, our different resources to saying, hey, it hasn't even been put out for public comment. That public comment is roughly, what, 90 days? Keep me honest here.
I don't actually know.
Okay. I've heard varying times.
I've heard 30 days after 20 days.
I'll say 90 days on the high end. I don't want to underestimate that. But again, once that goes to public comment, there's no comment, then it goes to final approval from the forestry aspect. So, that's where we are getting our resources, as you can see, lined up to say, okay, this is where the step is. How do we get it done?
Commissioner Fraser, you have the floor.
Oh, Ms. Collins.
No, I didn't. My phone is going crazy.
Two questions. One on the 18 month timeframe. I understand that's the time, the entire timeframe for White Rock. Will the other, the other side installations be taken concurrently or will they be a consecutive sort of?
It would be at the same time. So, what we would try to do is the minute that White Rock is again, everything hinges on that, once that's good to go, we would start doing all the work and getting that scheduled. So, it wouldn't be one at a time. That's a good question.
And number two, do you know the number of personnel changes there have been in the Forest Service?
In this area? By short time, it has, it has been a lot.
There's been two since last July.
Yes.
So, that probably hindered you more than just about anything else. Forest Service typically does not want anything to go in here. It's like their personal playground or whatever. But, and they want to shut things down that are already existing here. So, yeah, the, everything that goes on with the Forest Service, if you, if something should only take a month, it will take at least a year. It's insane. So, appreciate you guys sharing the information and that sort of thing. There's not really anything you can do without the, without White Rock because if at the last minute they decide to not approve it, you have to punt, and there's no point in trying to shift it somewhere else.
Most of the other sites, it would be a possible final site, unfortunately, on Forest Service land. So, then we start the whole process with Forest Service all over.
That's a, that's a good point. So, we've also looked at replacement sites. So, in the process of coming, I said, okay, if we're waiting on White Rock, what else is there? As we looked at it, it would be roughly three to five sites worth of coverage. And there's not a viable replacement that would put in the same footprint. We don't want to go down in coverage. We want to say this is what was proposed back in '22. This is what we want to stay with. So.
Again, what happens for planning purposes here in the county if the permit is not permitted? Because I know with tacking, the white way, if it's not permitted, that means the system is not operable. It's covered, you see? And in this too, there's supposed to be a test being made as to the usability of our officers and our first responders on our handhelds. There's been no test, no, no information granted whatsoever, even up to this date as to it.
Sure. So, as far as testing goes, typically after, so I'll kind of do it two ways. So, I've done testing with other counties, other agencies. As we say, okay, it'll take three sites to put up in your county, or four sites, whatever it is. There's existing state coverage in X, Y, and Z. We've done it in a couple of other places. We'll give them portables to go test. If that in fact hasn't been done, we can certainly do that. I've got portables I can furnish for you all to do that. And I would be more than happy to come up here and walk through that with you guys. My background used to be in radio with Motorola in previous role. So, I'd be more than happy to do that. And one of the, and again, forgive me, I'm just learning the process here, but those are things absolutely I can do for you guys. Now, again, what I will say, without other towers, you're only going to be using some of the existing tacking coverage. So, you'd be able to see the footprint. But again, that's, to your point on, and maybe if you're asking this or not, you're not going to see the full coverage footprint until what's called the burning period. So, that is the 90 day period before we kick on beneficial use. So, that allows you to go in after all the sites have been stood up, you actually go in and do coverage testing. So, you'll go in and say, does it pass here? Does it pass here? I see it's shaded on the map. What does that look like? So, there is a comprehensive process after all the sites are stood up, before it's turned over, and we say, Carter County Police, Fire, EMS, whoever, before that goes, there is a testing period that's followed.
Okay, let's see, you have the floor.
I would just like to add in on what you were just talking about. We actually have tested it. Number one has worked with EMA, and I believe it was about a year and a half ago that you and a couple of other people, they communicated via the tacking radios that we had, I don't know if there was some facility county or where they're from, but we went all over the county and tested several sites. There were several sites that do not get out on our current radio system that do get out tacking. Places up in Elk Mills and Pogey, Butler Bridge, basically the only thing that doesn't is White Rock, is around Roan Mountain area. There are still several places our current radios don't work with that tacking will work with based on those tests. But if White Rock is available, then that's the only part that's not covered.
Back in 1970, I'm going back quite a few years, back in 1970, yeah, you want those boxes, I'd serve and everything. They put out over 100 watts. Watts on them now is about what?
So, for handhelds, it's about 300?
I play the radios, it's in the vehicle.
In the vehicles? So, you can get out to a, you can get out to a high power, 100 watt mobile. So, you could do that, or the standard non-high powered mobile is about 30 watts.
We're pulling, we was pulling 100 watts, the VCR. And you use your talk to my.
That's right. That's right.
Losing power without, we were using the same tire that rode around the mountain. Our steel, as a matter of fact.
So, and that's part of going from DHF or UHF frequencies down to 7800 and narrow banding and a lot of things that have grown the whole radio industry, right? Regardless of vendor, that's brought it to that, where we are.
Wow, what's a watt?
That's a good question. I would assume personal safety. I've heard some stories, people grabbing antennas when you key up those 100 watt radios and they'll burn your hand.
You can hear it out of there where you use it. If you was down in the day, you could hear it.
Oh, yeah. I've heard the same thing. Yes, sir.
Can you understand how frustrated we are though, especially ones that were here before the new commissioners came in, that this is dragging and dragging and dragging. And I realize some of it's not your fault. I understand that. But we need it. This county needs these. We need this. We needed it a long time ago. And it's very frustrating from month after month after, I was looking back, month after month. It's almost, same story, almost. And, you know, we're, we're running out of time here with this money too. There's a deadline. Correct me if I'm wrong, isn't there a, we've got to spend some money here, and if we spend it on radios or whatever, then there are going to be, what did you say, batteries and all that can be affected. So, you know, I appreciate you coming, but I don't feel like we've accomplished a lot either.
No, and I understand. And again, I mean, this is something going into this. I know there's not any great update. Again, I do want to tell you guys, again, what I can promise you guys is that I'm working with our resources to try to make sure these meetings don't happen again. I know it's easier said than done. I want everybody to know that. But I hear the frustration. I see the frustration. And frankly, I want to get this thing kicked off because I think Mark and I have probably talked more about this, this system in the last, gosh, year and a half, almost 18 months, what to do to get around it to this point. So, I apologize on behalf of my teams, and this is something that I want to make sure to you all that we're working to get you guys an answer. And again, we'll continue to be here, do these meetings until we get the answer. Good or badly, we're going to get you the answer.
Thank you.
But I'm sure there's a question I'd direct to Mark, and the finance director both. He had a concern, there was a grant from First Tennessee Development District for additional communicate, fund for communications, of which we had asked 60 days ago, two meetings, that we had known, let me back up. We noticed that the amount of equipment that was in the current proposal at that time was going to be reduced because of the new grant from First Tennessee Development District that was going to purchase direct and give it to the agencies who it's, you know, proposed for. But we have not gotten any correction in the proposal from them. The same thing that we discussed last month, has that been done?
So, are you talking about correction in the larger proposal? Are you talking about a correction?
We have a proposal that was given to us by your office, listing all the equipment, everything, correct?
I didn't, I listed out all the radios that we needed.
Since then, 60 days ago, we had a grant for FD, is that 140, wasn't it 143,000? I think it was our, see, 143, 134, for additional communication here, that was included in our proposal, which is going to be separate. We told them it will be separate. We've advised it's going to be separate. Has that been corrected to where our proposal now is in line?
That's, that's what we were talking about earlier. Would, would the increase in the, in this Motorola proposal, all the rest of those radios will actually be purchased with that other, I'm sorry, with that other thing?
But the First Tennessee Development District is handling that, they're sale, not us. They're the ones that's doing the purchasing. They're the ones that will be the distributor of it. That's why I say it should not be on our.
Is that the CPVG grant that you're referring to? I understood it'd be awarded, and I would be working with Lance Lowery to get a, a purchase order and work in through that to get that done. I've already spoken to Lance Lowery about it, conversation about that.
Commissioner Fraser, when you're ready, that's the floor.
I don't think that it's particularly Motorola that's dragging their feet here because, let, correct me if I'm wrong, how much compensation have you received for the work that you've done so far from us?
We have not received a dime yet. We have not invoiced. We have not gotten anything. We put in a lot of man hours and time coming up, looking at the White Rock site, structural rules and environmental, and that was really from the keynote, not being involved in any of the project, not last July. Again, with one of the interim forester directors to talk about, hey, what can we do to White Rock enough to get the process started? While we're waiting and they shift their people around, what can we do? So, that was, it was a conference call, we were over at the EOC that talked about doing the NEPA, the SHIPUP, which is your environmental testing, your soil testing, all of those things. So, they did grant, forestry did grant that much while they go through it. And in their words, it was to help with the application process.
Right. So, you would like to get paid as quickly as possible, I assume?
Yes, sir. But we'd also like to get you all your equipment as well.
Right. But you've still not received a dime, and you've done all of these other things leading up to it. It's not because you don't want to go through with it, it's that going forward with it is not the right thing to do.
Yes, sir.
That's correct. Because, I mean, they could dump all the equipment on us right now, and it would just be sitting in Mark's office, and you would have to go through a maze to find him. And then we would be running off our warranty times. Doesn't make any sense what they're doing is, in this particular scope for the project, the right thing to do, which kind of shocks me, but it is.
But the whole thing in essence, there is no payment because there is no contract. I don't care what you've done up to the time you walked in our door. There's no obligation unless our attorney advisor, otherwise, that we have hired our Motorola to do anything for this county.
So.
Have you got a contract?
It's not here when it was signed, but for us to put anything on our books, we need to have a signed contract. So, it's a, it's a signed document that's between Motorola Vice President and the representative from the county. I can go pull that, but there's no way, our logging rules for a project won't let us log a project unless you have a signed contract, you have a purchase order, needs to proceed form, anything like that. So, for us to have that on our books, that shows that there is a order from Carter County, there is a signed contract, and I can work to get that.
I would like to have a copy of that from the financial management because it has never been on this floor. We have never voted for an expenditure at all, or a contract.
Okay. I will take that.
Thank you.
I'll give you my card before I leave here, and I'll make sure to get that to you.
Well, just send it to the finance director, she'll get it to us.
Absolutely.
Commissioners, thank you spoken. Good, very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Robert, are you guys having to lay this in the budget?
18 items. How to move quickly through these and then we don't. Let me also reference the budget document. These packets very thick. You know, more information, I can give you page numbers for each of these items. As soon as it's possible. So, let's start with 17A1, we have permission to approve all hand ready communities grant contract between the state of Tennessee, Department of Economic and Community Development and Carter County Government. This is for the amount of $3,664. There is no match. And these particular items are computers that will be used at the Roan Mountain Treatment Center and at the Senior Citizens Center.
Motion seconded by Eric Fraser. Does the commission have questions? Okay, that's what I don't know. You have a?
Yes.
Or Collins?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Let's move on to item two. I'll make the motion to approve the public assistant grant award for cost incurred during FEMA 4514-TR-TN during the COVID period before the state of Tennessee Department of Military, Tennessee Emergency Management Agency at Carter County. That's in the amount of $82,44.46. All of that is, goes to the county. There's no matching funds. Thank you, Director Harold, for recovering those funds. Appreciate you.
Yes, there's a segment from Commissioner Hughes. Any questions? Pass those.
Willie Campbell?
Yes, sir.
Kelly Collins?
Yes.
Is that unanimous? Thank you. Item number three, and I'll make the motion to approve the resolution which is in your packet to authorize the approval of program policies for the Carter County 2024 home contract. You're looking at the big budget document. You can find that particular group of pages between page 58 and 98.
We have a segment from Nancy Brown. Any questions on this?
All right, we're going. Willie Campbell?
Yes.
Kelly Collins?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Let's move to item four. So, I'll make the motion to approve the 2024 THDA home contract for administrative services and housing rehabilitation professional services in Carter County, Tennessee, and First Tennessee Development District.
Segment from Julie Guinan. Seeing no discussion in advance, let's vote.
Willie Campbell?
Yes.
Willie Collins?
Yes.
Thank you. That is unanimous. Let's move to item five, and I'll make the motion to approve the resolution that's in your packet to authorize the payment of annual supplement to each county commissioner who successfully completes the state, completes the state required containment protection program each year. That's in the amount of $600, and it is in addition to the commission regular salary. And we noticed too, hopefully, that there is a process that you'll need to move through. Once you get that, once you complete that particular class or course, you'll need to download the certificate, send it to the chair of the commission, she will sign off on it, and that will go to finance, and you will be paid that amount.
Motion was seconded by Avery Guinan. Is there a question? Please, uh?
Willie Campbell?
Yes.
Willie Collins?
Yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous. So, let's move to item number six, and I'll make the motion to approve the resolution officially approving certain fund transfers that were inadvertently omitted from Carter County Budget Appropriation, Resolution Number 873 for fiscal year beginning on 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025. And Finance Director Watson, you want to explain what we're doing here?
Willie Campbell?
Yes.
Willie Collins?
Yes.
Thank you, that's unanimous. So let's move to item number six and I'll make the motion to approve the resolution officially approving certain fund transfers that were inadvertently omitted from Carter County Budget Appropriation Resolution Number eight seven three for fiscal year beginning on the first twenty twenty-four and ending June thirtieth twenty twenty-five. Finance Director Watson, you want to explain what we're doing here?
There are three transfers that were moved between funds and we say that we do a budget resolution stating that those transfers were approved by commission.
Once this passes, hopefully tonight, it'll go to the state and then they'll approve our budget. That's pretty good.
Okay, we have a second from Todd Smith. Is there any discussion? Uh, please vote.
Willie Campbell?
Yes.
Willie Collins?
Yes.
I mean, yes, also.
Thank you, that passes unanimously. Let's move to item number seven. I'll make the motion to approve County Fund Budget Amendment one oh one dash two, items one through six. In the amount of one hundred seventy thousand, five hundred and eight dollars, forty-six cents with one thousand dollars coming from the unsigned fund balance.
Second by Eric Frazier.
Again, you can find those in the big budget document. Towards the end of the packet.
Okay, that's them.
Willie Campbell?
Yes.
Kelly Collins?
Yes.
Thank you, that is unanimous. Move to item eight, and I'll make the motion to approve Solid Waste Fund Amendment one one six dash two, items one to ten thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars with nothing coming from the unsigned fund balance.
Second by Jason Paulson. Rebecca.
Thank you, that is unanimous. Move on to item number nine and I'll make the motion to approve Highway Fund Budget Amendment one through one dash two, item one, in the amount of one thousand dollars with nothing coming from the unsigned fund balance.
Second by Jason Rastin. Let's vote.
Willie Campbell?
Yes.
That is unanimous, thank you. Let's move on to item C N, which is also a highway fund. Budget Amendment one thirty-one dash two B, item one, in the amount of one thousand nine hundred one hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred dollars with nothing coming from the unsigned fund balance. It's primarily allocated from within the highways current budget to cover engineering services and professional.
Motion seconded by Commissioner Rastin. That's all. So Eamonn?
Yes.
Thank you, that is unanimous. Let's move on to, um, number eleven and I'll make the motion to approve General purpose school fund Budget Amendment one four one dash two, items one through eight, in the amount of six million grand, forty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents with two hundred eight thousand, one hundred seventy dollars coming from this unsigned fund balance. These include the teachers' raises as well as the paraprofessional full-time part.
Can I clarify that?
Pardon?
May I clarify that?
Sure, you can do that.
That does not include the teacher raises. What that is, is five million from one seventy-seven for the Hunter Elementary Project.
Okay.
And remaining of that is for all the other, the one forty-one.
That's the next, number fifteen.
Number eleven?
No, that's motion fifteen, item one seventy-seven dash one.
That's all correct.
Well, it came to budget this way. That's what we were given and that's what was approved in budget. Any attorney got an opinion?
I have zero idea. I know, I know this is what country budget. I know there was a discrepancy.
Should we defer this back to budget? Till we have clarification on the amounts? We'll make a motion to defer this item back to budget till we have clarification of the amounts.
I'll second that.
When you second that, now.
What, what was the motion?
To refer back to budget till we have clarification on this particular Budget Amendment one four one dash two, items.
Okay, if you give me this a second, Dr. Jack, I want to make sure that the clerk's office gets this recorded.
Before we jump, before we jump the shark here, there one of these, motion fifteen and motion eleven have to go together. Because one is a transfer in.
That's what I'm saying, the five million dollars needs to be transferred from one seventy-seven.
Yes.
That's for funding of the Hunter Project.
Correct. And then it's realized on the one and the one forty-one. Is that correct?
Yes. So Commissioner Derry, you want to amend your motion to include item fifteen as well?
Yes.
Do you include seven? I'll get, I'll get.
Budget item eleven and.
And fifteen back till we get clarification.
Isn't fifteen to transfer eleven is to receive and allocate?
A million dollars is transferring from one seventy-seven.
Right, fifteen is to do here, uh, transfer. You have to take it from one fund to another, fifteen to transfer. Eleven is to receive and allocate.
Yes. It's, it's set up correctly.
Motion is to defer those two items back to.
Commissioner, as you see, the motion is taken on your screen, the motion itself. Is anybody have questions or any clarification on what we're about to go on?
Yes, please clarify exactly why and what this is. I mean, we're getting here, so. There was a question about the transfer from seventy-seven to, um, one forty-two. Which we have to do that transfer out of capital projects into one forty-two to pay for items for the Hunter Project. But what?
You want me to re, show me your receipt? What was the issue over here? I can hear that either. I think the confusion is that it looks like we're taking five million out twice. But what that is, is you're seeing an inter-fund transfer. When you're taking it from one fund to another, number fifteen on the agenda is to transfer. Number eleven is to receive and allocate from the transfer.
Are you getting this, Collins?
So how was it stated in budget? Well, it came through a separate amendment. It was, it came through separately. Yeah, it came through a separate amendment. Because it has to be an amendment out of one seventy-seven put into one forty-two.
Well, on this one, Carolyn, it's one forty-one.
It's one forty-one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One forty-one. So, I mean, it, it looks like it's correct.
Yeah, most of it can, that's, that's what I'm not quite understanding what the problem is.
So, yes, can we ask, like, you, you said at the beginning, I'm sorry, look at here, right here, that something was incorrect. Can you tell us what that was?
I was talking. It was, it was the confusion up here that I think it's right on the agenda.
Uh huh.
Number one, we're taking it from one fund to another. On the agenda, number, the number fifteen is to transfer that money. Number eleven is to receive it and then allocate. So if we did the number fifteen first and transferred it before we did number eleven, is kind of what you're saying the order should be in? That would make it more clear, easier to understand.
We just do them in order of funds, so if that would be preferable to be more clear, then that's absolutely fine. We typically just do the funds in order, no matter numerical order, so.
But as long as we're understanding that, then do we actually need to table it or to go back to budget then?
It's going to be a problem to table it because.
Well, yeah, not to ta, so as long as we understand that, that they're okay, that they go in this order that we have them, is that not acceptable and so we don't have to send it back to budget then?
I mean, is that acceptable to you? Okay, yeah, because as I said, we have payments that we need to get out for the Hunter Project. And I apologize, that's why I said one forty-two, because up to this point, uh, one, uh, one forty-two is where Hunter Project's been flowing through, so. I apologize for that.
Commissioner Wayne has the floor.
Totally confused, always go wrong. Is the Hunter Project funded through the school board already? Taking more money out from our budget or is it already in that?
They have, yeah, they already have the funds, they just have it in a capital project fund. We're moving it from that capital fund into their normal one forty-one so they can cut the checks basically to pay for the project. We can't write checks out of one seventy-seven.
Future that if we do that, it would put something in this work. Move the fund from one seventy-seven, receiving it. Because that's what's got me so confused. I have no idea what the motions or budgets are about other than just what I've heard here.
We can add some clarification to the notes going forward when we do that, if that would help.
One fund budget line to another budget line. We need to know this line to go into this line. Maybe for one, I don't know if anybody else is confused as I am, but.
We can add a little more clarification to the statement and maybe that will make it a little more.
And you on the floor?
Yeah, the reason I made the motion is she said that the six million, three hundred and forty-four thousand number was not correct.
That's, it is.
That is why I made that motion. And myself, I'd like to see it go back for clarification.
Mr. Dill, I didn't say that was incorrect, I said it, it did not include the raises. And then I separated where these million came from.
I heard that wasn't right, that was what that was worded.
I have an issue with raises. Well, it's according to the notes that came out.
Wrong, it's a pre-K. That's the only one with a narrative that has raises because that budget has to be budgeted. You get the two percent raise in for the.
Okay, I get you.
So Commissioner Dill, what's your position?
I'll stand with, I'll stand with my motion.
Notice you have on the floor to send these two items, number one and fifteen. Tell me what the problem is because there's a motion on the floor. Unless we can straighten it out, we'll set aside.
So would you be satisfied with changing? And from what do you suggest as far as which line items? And that's only relate to the pre-K line items, but they're mixed in there.
Well, they're all on the sheet with just the pre-K grant. Because the rest of it is. That's the only one that has raises.
Can I clarify that one? What?
With budget.
Which motion are you talking about?
Number eleven.
Yeah, that's what we want. Okay, so we're still looking at number eleven on there?
The confusion was that the raise, or the motion, or part of the budget amendment that includes the raises is only for pre-K, not for anyone else, for, um, professionals or teachers. So we need to adjust the wording. Would that be sufficient?
However it needs to go before, I mean, the commission is satisfied.
Would that be acceptable? And would that be acceptable to you? We really need to get, since we pay those bills.
I see, I know that we need to pay the bills, but we also, before we vote on something, we need for it to be clarified. On what is being received in and what is being exposed out of that account. I'm not going to vote on something that I don't, sure what's coming in and what's going out. Whether it be wording or whatever the case may be.
Because the problem is the way it's worded, it appears to be more than just the pre-K. Is that what I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
The way it come across budget was incorrect, right?
I'm looking at the budget one right here, the one that they sent us before budget. And you don't do that on this particular motion. It does it all and you remember in that center section is to recognize allocate funds for voluntary pre-K grant reflects raise on pre-K's portion of supervisory salary reflects teacher raises for salaries according to new salary schedule. Um, additional funds needed to cover two increase. Funding for head start staff to perform duties with pre-K teachers reflects salary increases. Second one shows reflects salary increases in line items to pay for increase in wages and benefits and funds needed to purchase a desktop computer for Hampton pre-K. So all that was in this one when we looked at it. Yeah, that's in the detail, that's just related to one forty-one's pre-K budget. It has nothing to do with the rest of budget amendments.
Well, that one actually, all those amendments were together in this one.
Well, but I mean, that description is just related to pre-K.
Also, this is allocated remaining one seventy-seven funds for Hunter Elementary Project.
Yeah, that's the, uh.
That's what I'm saying, this looks like they are moving two, five millions is what that looks like. That's what I couldn't understand a few minutes ago. But all this was in this budget amendment when we went through the budget.
Mr. Frazier?
I, I, I think, and I'm not disparaging Dr. Enkoff whenever I say this, I think it was just a small slip of what he was referring to. And it just led to a lot of confusion. Everything is the exact same as whatever it came through. I don't think anything is out of the ordinary. I mean, there was no serious questions on it when it came through the, when it came, when it came through the budget committee. I mean, it's just a transfer in and a transfer out and in one of the largest funds we have, but I mean, everything is broken down in what each one of the individual transfers refers to. I mean, this is one of the clearest amendments, other than the fact that it's a transfer in and transfer out that we get.
The other raises for one forty-one have already been appropriated, that was done.
Yeah.
This is just for pre-K.
So you're saying it's correct. It is only, Jen, and that's what needs to be approved, I think. Little bit needs to agree with that, too.
It just sounded like it was all.
It's already passed through budget, so everybody's happy if everything that's already on the papers, voted on.
I think my, I think the confusion was that the raises were part of something other than just pre-K, that the raises are only part of pre-K. Which is in one forty-one. Head store is the one that's in one forty-five, so that helps.
So we have a motion on the floor. The person who made the motion says he's sticking with it. So is there any other discussion before the vote? So as you see at the top of the screen, the number. So as you see at the top of the screen, the number, the motion is to send budget items to Leonard Big Thing back to the budget committee.
You speak.
What else to say that I don't know how else to clarify?
Okay, let's vote.
Will Campbell?
No.
Motion fails. Dr. Enkoff presented, she will present.
Let me go back to item number eleven. Yes, I was happy with what we have, her explanation, she moved information from the finance director. As written. We'll repeat the motion to approve general purpose school fund budget amendment one four one dash two. Has one through rate in the amount of six million three hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents, with two hundred and eighty thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars coming from the fund's unassigned fund balance.
And you still have a second on the motion? Okay, so it stands as before. Commissioners, would you have to ask any questions or provide any, any thoughts?
I understand what Danny was saying today. I understand what Mr. Enkoff said, too. There's nothing changed. Just slipping.
Anybody else? All right, Fabri is in the air.
Will Campbell?
Yes.
We have twenty yes votes, so that is. Let's move on to item twelve. Motion to accept school federal projects fund budget amendment one four two dash two items one seven. In the amount of five million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars, no cents, with nothing coming from the unassigned fund balance.
Second, provided by Aaron Frasier. Want to push? And it's done on item number twelve.
Will Campbell?
Yes.
Work and sometimes is hot.
Twenty-three ones, so that item passes, thank you. Let's move to number thirteen. I'll make the motion to approve service fund budget amendment one four three dash one items one, into an amount of seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars, no cents, with thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars coming from the unassigned fund balance.
Question seconded by Aaron Frazier, any questions? That's up.
Campbell?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, that is unanimous. Let's move to item number fourteen. I'll make the motion to approve Head Start Fund Budget Amendment one forty-five dash one item one in the amount of one million, five hundred thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars, no cents, with nothing coming from the unassigned fund balance.
Dr. Enkoff, excuse me, you accidentally said six hundred and thirty-nine, I believe it's six thirty-six.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for that correction.
Okay, and Todd Smith, your second, is that correct, sir? All right, any questions? Okay, let's vote.
Will Campbell?
Yes.
Say that is unanimous, thank you. So let's move to item fifteen. I'll make the motion to approve Education Capital Project Fund Budget Amendment one seven seven dash one in the amount of five billion dollars, with five million coming from the fund's unassigned fund balance. It's the school system unassigned fund balance. And that is the Hunter allocation.
Seconded by Aaron Frazier, any questions?
No questions, I'm just like the only recordist having said. My biggest problem with the five million transfer to spend in Hunter project is that they closed Little Milligan saying they had no money, but they want to do a twenty-nine million dollar project in Hunter. I don't understand that, that is not small values, I have a problem with it, so I'm just like.
Okay, please vote. I'm sorry, maybe you went in the last second, I thought that was one second.
So I did vote. I was told it would cost one point six million to keep Little Milligan open.
Can you speak up a little, we're having.
I'm sorry.
I just can't hear.
I understand it would cost like one point six million to keep Little Milligan open for the year. And by eliminating Little Milligan, they've now lost income from students from Johnson County. They're busing children from the Little Milligan area for almost an hour on one of the most dangerous roads in the county in the wintertime. And I just don't see where it's gonna save that much money, other than possibly utilities. Teachers are still the same teachers, they've been moving to another school, and students are going to another school. We're gonna have to increase the size of another school now, instead of keeping one open, which is going to cost me more to go to or increase the size of the school. I just don't see the school board to save the money that they think they're saving.
Okay, now we have Commissioner Lee in. Does anybody else want to speak? One wants. One wants. Let's vote.
Will Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes nineteen in favor of the events. So let's move on to animal shelter issues. Number sixteen is to approve animal shelter monetary donations in the amount of eleven thousand, seven hundred and three dollars in donations and ten thousand dollars in unrestricted funds, total amount of twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and three dollars, no cents.
Seconded by Aaron Frazier, are there questions? Let's vote.
Will Campbell?
Yes.
Yes.
Unanimous, thank you. Let's move on to item number seventeen. Motion to approve the animal shelter non-monetary donations totaling eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Seconded by Misses Childress, that's up.
Will Campbell?
Yes. Hang on, before you do that, you got a number eighteen up there, HVAC.
Yeah, it's gonna come after this one.
Yeah. It says we're voting on that right now.
I'll hit the screen, so.
I'll change it.
I don't know. We'll make you aware of it.
Thank you.
Yes, that's not your thing, yeah, I'll, I'll change it there just a second, as soon as everybody's finished.
So you want us to vote with it incorrect on the screen?
Well, yeah, no, I'll change it.
Attorney, advice?
As long as everybody stands with their voting on, that's fine, she's just gonna correct it when it's time to make your last vote.
Okay, so you're actually voting on item number seventeen, non-monetary donations to the animal shelter totaling eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Is there anyone that's not clear?
Just a second.
That is unanimous, thank you. Last item from budget, we replaced on the agenda tonight. You'll have two items in your packet, one from Mayor to Rebecca English, who is the regional director, who's regional health office, regarding a request for around sixty thousand, five hundred dollars. You'll also find one, uh, even from Rebecca English to Director Watson and Deputy Director Perry, regarding this particular issue. And voting on, acknowledging of the state, uh, it actually burns the floor because that would constitute. It's been recognized now by both sides for the amount of three hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred dollars. This is a cost reimbursement agreement.
Aaron Frazier, you're recognized.
No, we need to suspend the rules, you didn't recognize us for the, for the motion that based on our vote. And I'll make a motion that we suspend the rules for the voting on number eighteen. And no further.
Okay, I don't have a second, just a second for the courts office to catch up to this change.
Suspend the rules to vote.
So that we can hear and vote for a budget. Item number eighteen.
The HVAC program for the health department.
Aaron Frazier, I'm ready for the motion.
He did it. Is there a second? Second, how nicely he used to suspend the rules. Everybody figure out what we're voting on. Okay, please vote.
Will Campbell?
Yes.
Yes.
Twenty-three eyes, one, I'm gonna pass. So we return now to item eighteen, which is a request for three hundred and sixty thousand, five hundred dollars for the HVAC at the health department. To reiterate, this is a cost reimbursement contract with the state of Tennessee.
And the second comes from Aaron Frazier, question. I don't have a second.
Will Campbell?
Yes.
Carrie was out of an accident. Your request to speak, that is on. You do want to speak?
No.
Okay.
Sure, it's just two eyes, and I, I regard Madam Chair, I yield the floor.
Thank you, Dr. Enkoff, Madam Chair. I would like to commend, we have our leader for keeping up with all the changes and getting Dr. Enkoff in before anybody made a motion. Uh, good job, thank you.
Okay, thanks to, thanks to the committee chair, Brad Johnson.
Manager, if you're not staying in place since it's only a single item, place in the motion to approve the disposal of surplus property with the new administration. May you dog was twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four.
We have a second from Julie Williams. Does anybody have questions? Are you pleased to vote on the disposal of surplus property?
Campbell?
Yes.
Motion passes Chair Johnson. I'll be committed.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt East Ridge Lane as a county road and add to the official county road list upon proper conveyance and right-of-way to Carter County.
Great, thank you Chair Raisnick, and we have a second from Gary Chino. I do have a question. Since we brought it up the other night, that each county regularly approved going forward, these have a turnaround. Does this one have a designated turnaround?
That is right.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else have a question? Okay, that's up.
Will Campbell?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move to Attorney Harbin, would any other committee like to just approve of a, of what's going on, what's coming up at your committee, anything at all?
I would, I'd like to talk with the highway committee, the roads, just so everybody know, we are trying to increase the budget, the resurface. Small increase with the highway department, and we're looking to potentially sub out, try to get money to sub out some additional paving, so they can keep up. But you'll hear more for that.
Okay, thank you Commissioner Raisnick. Any other committee reports? Or is that you started wrong on anything? This coming year, that's something that I would like to try to increase is if every chairperson or board liaison that we have, would try to give at least a sense to each about what's going on here to me. I would greatly appreciate that. All right, last call for any committee reports. County attorney, or board of directors.
Okay, that's the usual, I'll follow every report like I do every month, and it'll detail all the things that went on this month, worked on. Other than that, or any questions, y'all might have to sue your litigation file this month. Against the county. I am prosecuting still the violation cases as always, and there were a few hearings on those this month. A new case filed this month, and actually, when it was fully resolved, they will be signed off on later today. Other than that, unless you all have questions, the report will be with the minutes, and don't take me anytime, of course, and I'm happy.
Last year called.
I'm sorry, you, oh, this is crazy saying, I'm listening. I'm literally just putting my phone down, I mean, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, just a couple of dates I wanted to share. I'll be the first to say, y'all know I'm not always happy with Valid Health. There are some things about certificate of need moving forward into next year. But I'll have to say, a crystal rush is with the Valid Health Mobile Health Connect Unit. They've been doing a fantastic job by bringing the mobile unit to our center, to the TLC. Every month after October, it will be there on the first Tuesday of the month. And that is anybody with or without healthcare, they can be seen, whether it's for a cold, or flu, or women's health, all of the things as far as their checkups. But they do, um, there with them, this is men or women. So some dates I just want to throw out there because of your districts. They will be in, I've got them scheduled for Red Mountain, October the eleventh, from nine to four. That will be at the Lower Shell Creek Christian Church. And any of these dates, we're also taking our free, the free food trailer and feeding people for free that day while they're there. October the fifteenth, it's at the TLC for the Stony Creek area. It's no point in putting it somewhere else, we're already in. It's no point in putting it somewhere else where it ends, Stony Creek. October the 17th, it's at Little Milligan Elementary School. Was going to be at a church, then it was going to be at a different church. But Donnie just told me tonight, he spoke with the school superintendent. So it will be at the Little Milligan Elementary School on October 17th. So if anybody wants to help on those days, they can always help, you know, sign people in or, you know, at least take their names or you can help me serve them food that day for that community. But then again, if you have anybody that needs health, you know, care and transportation is a issue, from then on, the first Tuesday of every month will be at the TLC. And then they're also going to bring the mammogram mobile unit for all women over 40. If they don't have the insurance, they can still have the mammogram. So have to do hats off on at least the mobile unit. And let's still try to get our hospital more than 20 something beds again.
Okay, Commissioner, do you have a floor?
Yeah, I asked a couple of meetings ago about the Joint Economic Development Board. Did you ever had any meetings or anything since then or?
We have had some unique since then. The main thing that we talked about with each county representative giving updates on their own personal counties has been the hotel study. And now the request for approvals. The mayor has talked briefly about this before us at some point. There's nothing other than those items of note through the board. But if Mr. Fraser, Mayor Williams, if anybody wants to put in something different than what I said.
My coworker was out of the office that day, so I wasn't able to attend.
So I'm just asking because we're putting all the burden on the taxpayers. We're not making any strides to have any kind of revenue for Carter County. Therefore, all the money we're spending is going to fall back on the taxpayers.
We don't actually spend anything on economic development. We spend zero dollars.
I'm talking about creating revenue for the county. Talking about what's the plans, what's the plans in the future of the county.
Those meetings are open to the public. Any commissioners welcome to show up and sit in on those meetings, just like the commission meeting.
The only economic developer that is currently actively working would be Logan Ingle for the city of Elizabethan.
Your comment is noted. Commissioner, you. Mr. Johnson?
Madam Chair, my statement relating to the communications project that we have has been stated that, you know, everything is hinged around the Black Rock Tire Permit System, which we, I think I understand or others understand that that's under the direction of the U.S. Forestry, that being a federal agency. And I can see why it's taken so long, even by the statements of our guest of the changeover. And I think it's taken so long, they've either retired or died off, one of the two. And that's why we can't get it expedited. So with that, I place in the motion that we direct our county mayor to make contact with our U.S. Senator and our U.S. Congresswoman to see if they can't aid in help the U.S. Forestry Department to give us priority and get this completed where we can do our job.
Next, we have a motion and a second coming from Adrian Williams. While she's getting this presented to us on the screen, we're in discussion. So Mayor Williams, maybe you want to speak to that before the vote?
A request for the mayor to do that instead of directing me would be nice and I would be happy to do that. I would have the channel.
Gee, wow, wow.
Use the pun where Johnson, will you please restate the motion from the end and consider the request from the mayor?
A request that the mayor make contact with our U.S. Senator and our U.S. Congress lady in relation to the problem with the U.S. Forestry Department for the permitting to use that facility for our communications.
Mr. Win, are you still the second?
Yes, I'm still the second. No, I don't worry. I don't accept change.
Nick, is your comment pertaining to this?
No, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Raznick, is your comment pertaining to this question? Okay, thank you. All right, then I guess we're ready to vote. If you want me to, I can, because I can. Okay, I see. I'm getting ready to say it. It's not good. You're already on the place to the mayor?
Yes.
Okay, question passes. Thank you, Mayor, for doing that for us. Then, Nate Holder, if you have a floor.
Thank you, Mayor. My comment is for this dark sky. I'm not familiar with any county in the state of Tennessee that honors that or does that. Nashville Metro, I think, does. And also the seven tracts of land Ms. Winchester was discussing, that was mine. That land is probably twice the distance, 1,500 feet from what rodeo arena is. So I just want y'all to know and understand that, that it's, you can't even see the house from my land. Get to the top of the barn, it's either the top of the rodeo arena announcer stand. I don't know how lights are going to go over the hills and through the woods and everywhere else to get where they're going. Just want y'all to understand that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Win?
My comments more about the hotel. Search or whatever you want to call it. I looked through the proposal, proposal and I was kind of disappointed in the fact that there was only three sites looked at. And all of them relatively small. One of them is if not on, I believe, very close to, over one mile, in that area. The other one is down by the driving theater, or is the driving theater place, and one right here on the corner by Carter. I'm disappointed in the number of sites they looked at because I know of other driving there are probably at least one piece of it is still within the city. I'm not sure that having a new hotel in here is going to do any better than the two we have now. It's been for a few years, but then it's not going to have enough clientele. Trucker won't use the two we have now because of the condition area. I know that for a fact. As a former trucker, I wouldn't use them. There's no way I would. I don't see that hotels would really be that, a hotel would be that benefit for the county. I see we'll bring in some property taxes, but what is the county going to give the hotel to try to come in here? I think that law said any benefit it adds for us for years to come. If we go ahead with that, I don't recommend that the county get tax nerds to the comfort of a multi-need car hotel.
Okay, Eric Fraser, do you have a floor?
Oh, I was just going to respond to what Nick said. In the Dark Skies Initiative, we don't really have the ability to control what an individual puts on their property. This would be more directed at, since this is another government agency, that would be able to restrict or limit what is put into the light systems that go in everywhere else in the county, put in by Elizabethan Electric. No, this wouldn't, we don't have the authority to go over, but we do have the authority to regulate that. That's all.
Jason Raznick?
I'm going on the same topic. So there's no law that we recognize any type of lighting laws and, you know. Another thing is if it's an unrestricted lot, that you're not in a restricted subdivision with an HOA with a set of guidelines and rules. I don't know how to say this, but, I mean, I guess if there's no law in effect and there's not going to be a law in effect, then it's issue dead. My question. How the individual has a right to light their property? Correct?
Up to a certain point.
300 feet away, I mean.
Well, it's, light trespass is a thing. And Ms. Winchester is correct that if it becomes a nuisance, then it can end up in court. One of the things that we kind of have to.
Is that a Carter County Commission issue?
Well. Could it be if the initiative is directed at the Elizabeth Electric System? If a person then puts a light, they can put whatever light they want, but the electric system is one thing that we could have purview of to prevent the electric system from.
We don't need our thumb on the electric system.
I'm just saying that you're going to end up in a hot shot. And I get it. I get it from a certain perspective, but no, we can't restrict what an individual would put on their property in the least. But if you're going to be trying to drive down G Street with 10,000 Lumen lights, it's not going to, I've got a stigmatism, it's not going to be a pleasant experience.
My question is, is this a commission issue? I need to hear it.
You asked, right?
Yeah.
So other counties that I have seen in Tennessee would regulate this as part of the zoning resolution or zoning orders through a city. So if it were to be something considered here, my recommendation would that it be go to the planning commission to be regulations to be put forth. But even with the ordinance in Nashville, that grandfathered in essentially all existing commercial structures, even replacements of bulbs in commercial structures. So, you know, I think you would have a tough time. It's certainly something that's not required to be regulated by the county in any manner whatsoever. But if you wanted to, I think the planning commission would be the place to start.
Thank you.
And Charlie Cox?
I think last month, Josh, you agreed to look into this a little bit more. And I agree that individuals have freedom on their own property, but let's go back to the nuisance issue. We have rules that restrict sound. We.
There's no sound ordinance.
Could I not call the police and say, these people are keeping me up at night and the police would come out?
Civil matter.
I'm sorry, what?
It's civil matter.
And maybe we need all of it. I don't know. I'm not, I'm not trying to say take freedoms away, but I also want us to be good neighbors. What does that look like to be a good neighbor? And what I'd like to see is, Josh, you look at what other counties in the state have done to be a good neighbor. We had to do something about lighting Unicoi County because somebody put a big light up and people driving on the street were blinded. And so the plant, and you're right, it was the planning commission that came in and said, you can't do that.
Right, and I did research it to some extent. I just didn't want to go down the path of a whole lot of time invested without that being the direction that the commission wanted to go. But certainly I did research it. Certainly that is the avenue I would suggest is through the planning commission, the zoning resolution. Certainly, as Ms. Winchester I'm sure is aware, there's private action available between neighbors. So I don't know if that's a government issue or a neighbor issue, but that's not for me to decide. That's for you all to decide.
In this case, it's another government entity, correct?
Well, I think that the other government entity could be an involved party, but we're not right now.
Sure, there's a huge cost savings with the electric system from going to that old style bulb to that new LED.
Yeah, and I'm not against going to LEDs in that respect. It's just 10,000 lumens. I've got a little bit of that in my place and I'm particularly liking it.
Okay, last year called.
Totally different note, I would like to say with the upcoming year and the meetings, if you are a chairperson or not a chairperson, please try to get someone to replace you. I know everything happens. I've missed, but when several people miss and other people show up for the meeting and they don't have enough for the meeting, then those people just have to sit there and there can be no voting. So if you've missed more meetings than you've come to, then you might want to not be on that particular committee.
Thank you. Very important.
I just want to end it saying, it's been a rough weeks for our schools and for our sheriff's department and our police department. And as a parent, not just commissioner, I just wanted to thank them for all their extra effort that they put into protecting our kids at school and all the mess that they've had to deal with with social media. And I think y'all most know, I moved my child from Hunter because she's got some, you know, some things going on with her autism. But we're at Unique Elementary and this has been my first emergency with her up there. And it's been rough. She's had panic attacks. We've had her in my bed for three days, but this morning she wasn't going to go to school. And instead, I took her up there and I sat with Mr. Thomas and he pulled out and talked to her just like he would you or me and said, here's our plan, here's the doors, here's this, look, there's the SRO and just the presence of the SROs there. She's at school and she hasn't missed any this year. And I just want to say, for one, I do agree with Julie. I love her smaller schools and it really helps our kids, especially those that, overwhelming with all the building at Hunter, she couldn't handle it. On the second hand, our kids are still going through things. I don't know if you've heard from citizens, but I've heard from some today in District 3. And there's one student from Happy Valley that will not attempt to go back right now because she was the one, when it all went down and the fire alarm got pulled and they had to rush in with the guns or whatever she's seen, she is in a complete panic about entering the door. So y'all think about it, but I know one call I'm going to make tomorrow, there needs to be a post something for these kids that had to go through a little extra fear, that there needs to be some more communication to help them go back into that setting because some are not wanting to do that right now. But I do appreciate all the shifts department did and I thank y'all for all of the work. We, I really appreciate it.
Did Avery, if you're personally look over the October agenda, all the different meetings? I didn't see a conflict, but I could have missed something. I didn't see it complete, but I could have missed something. Commissioner, I, I just want to say again, thank you for electing me chairperson. Of course, I'm gonna talk to Attorney Harbin and Box Chair Collins, but I definitely would like to see more involvement with the Box Chair. And, you know, if everybody agrees that I have been, that's all I would like this next year to go. It's very important that you all are prepared with your next chairperson and other emerging players, and I want to be more helping that along on the weekends too. So, thank you, Ian. Does anybody else have a calling?
Got one more thing.
Yes, Lily?
I'm a light bill. People can't stand lights, I'm getting ready to put them up here in a boat. Those lights I want, never to ever ruin.
Your Christmas lights, boy, I want yours.
Let me say that the chairpersons who had the resolutions printed out, I've got them here to sign, if you want to do that before you run them.
Okay, y'all, no sense.
We should do a adjournment.
I wonder if there was a second there, or a favor?